You are watching Access Lapeur County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 25th meeting of the Long Beach Town Council and Finance Committee Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslapourcounty.org.
And the council and the budget finance committee, I'm sorry, well, no, budget finance and yeah, budget finance, but we invited Zach here because we want to hear from Zach because there's an issue regarding funding of our department. So I guess Zach, do you want to start off and kind of tell us where you're at, where the park board is at? I did send your email to everyone, because I think everyone has seen that, right?
So I guess I'll just repeat it all, but instead of the email, but sorry, I've got like glasses to see you and not glasses to see this. So where we're at on budget is that stop 23 were significantly higher in cost than we anticipated and we budgeted for 22, 2021, sorry. We spoke, I wanted some clarification on one or two points. John just told me that we thought, so stop 23, there was $34,000 or $500 was paid to Woodruff last year, about 20 minutes, three, four years ago. And that was, so that was paid for out of the bond.
Correct.
And the $47,600, it was meant to be the park board portion of the stop 21 work, was that paid as well?
I don't really pay that much.
We got that before 23, I mean, I asked that.
Yeah.
And that was also paid for out of the bond, right? So neither one of those hit our budget officially yet. So that, what I'm assuming, if it would be actual on the assumption I'm looking at, we would like to get stop 19 back up and running this year. In order to do that, plus put a split rail fence up along the west side of that property, east side of that property, would be $9,920. And that's to put in a metal stairway that conforms with the new beach entrance. It's going to be 42 inches deep, go down, the seawall is about 45 foot drop down there now. So that would fix that. I've got a quote in hand for that, for that, for the contractor. Stop 28, I've got a quote in hand for $22,325 to do wood, redo the wood walkway from the street down to the beach. And also make it two feet wider, which will be the same as stop 23. People really like have that extra width there so we can pass, little easier up and down. So that's $22,325. We'd actually budgeted this year $25,000 for that, so our budget's good for that work. And then stop 29, we didn't anticipate having a beach to build to at stop 29 this year, so we're not budgeting that for 2022. We budgeted that for 2023. But we've got access to the stop now. There's a, we've got a drawing from a company, a contractor, it's not Woodruff, actually, it's another one, Sullivan and Gamble, to build us a metal platform to come from the existing wood that's basically stopped up in the area where you walk 29 is, is a wood platform that's just open, that being wood, a metal walkway that was out onto one of the existing pylons that's sitting in the sand, and then go straight down to the beach and would be south of the living road, well, I see wall that's built into the sand down there. So that, that made it something to way to get folks down to 29. 29's been down for three years, maybe a month completely. That money includes no work, if you had a part of the stop at the top, we could do that next year. This will just give us access for people to get down. So if we do that, and we do stop 28, which we've been promising since before the storms, 29, 28 was going to be our next stop, and then we ended up having to do 21 and having to do 23, we don't have the kind of budget to do the kind of work that was done in 21.
Say, oh, you remember 29?
29 is $36,575. And luckily the extra cost of that is primarily because it's all metal, all the work done in years ago. So the total, if you add up all of those things, including the unbudgeted higher amount of 21 and 23, is $150,920, which would be stop work for 21, 23, 28, 29, and 19. And our budget for the year is $75,000 for capital.
And if you're talking about, or what is the purpose?
For capital, it's a luxury. We also, and we've got Joy to talk with Helen and Tim, we have a bit of an overture, or we have some money in our budget from money we didn't spend last year, I think it's about $40,000, that we can pull from as well. So we, we could use some of that to pick up some of that shortfall, but the two things for me is, we got to figure out who's paying for what on stops going forward, is right? The way we're set up now, the way we're doing it, we don't have enough money to do major repairs and stops, like significant, like 21 time stuff, we can't do that. We can, you know, if we did one a year, we can, but you know, we've got multiple stops to keep up. But after all these are done this year, we're not going to be in a pattern, we're just going to be keeping stops up, planting and landscaping, replacing boards here and there. We're not going to have to completely redo a stop in quite some time. So this is sort of a one-off this year. So I guess I'll go back to questions. What am I not explaining well, I guess?
Zach, any idea when this work will be done? It's so hard to get anybody to do anything.
Well, yeah, so, good question. So I've got a contractor lined up, ready to, ready to start, and so we would try to have it done before the summer on all three stops. 19's a small job, that's not a day, and I'm talking about a week of work, probably, though pretty fat most of that. Stop 28, it's going to have that stop down, just depends how many people they could throw out, I'm guessing maybe two, three weeks, the stop will be out of commission, and now 29 is already out of commission, but maybe a two, three job on that as well.
Can I make a comment from the accounting side of this? We had a, we had a good meeting just now with Center, our consultant group, and they've got some numbers that are a little bit different than what you mentioned, and I feel that although your, your requests are of an urgent nature, for sure, you know, sometimes it's a promise and everybody's going to want to use these things, I feel that we need a good accounting of the park board before, if they're conscious, we can say, okay, go ahead and do this. For example, your 2022, 2022 budget, $190,000, expenditures $188,000, and right now, surplus $200,000 we're showing. So there seems to be a little bit of a difference, but you know, I'm not saying that somebody missed something or didn't, but I'd like to, at least from the town clerk treasure side, get a feel for really where we're at and what we're going to need. And then from the state board accounts, what, to get a full idea of what is your, what is park board's responsibility to cover and what is town's responsibility to cover? Is it, and if there's going to be a big change, for example, if, you know, streets should take over the access to the beach or part of the access to the beach, I think there probably should be a resolution that gets approved by the town council before we go ahead and just, I mean, I don't think we have the authority to just say, well, you know, okay, we'll, we'll work to the high watermark and then you guys own below that or whatever the case may be. I think there should be a resolution to identify who is responsible for what. And then, as I said, to identify exactly where we're at with the accounting. We just closed out 2021, and there's some additional monies, as you mentioned, that have rolled over. We haven't closed out January, February, March, so it'd be good to know, and I don't think you guys had a hell of a lot of expenses that were attributed to you in those months, but again, just, you know, and I'm not asking for a ton of time, but we probably need a good week at least of just kind of a deep dive into finances to make sure that we're okay and where we're at, and you know, maybe there's more or less, but it would be responsible, I think, to take some time and identify where we're at.
We've got a detailed capital budget, and 75 is only the capital portion of the whole total, but the joys, the joys here, the joys in charge.
Also, um, T M U and whatever, the board.
No, we haven't. We've actually got a three-year plan going out with finances for the stop repairs.
And as you said, we get through this stuff this year, let's hopefully clear sailing and, you know, the rest of the, the two years of your three-year plan should be easy.
Should be, yeah.
So that 40 surplus you talked about, that you're considering capital, the projects were close, not necessarily where our, what your total?
It was, it was just surplus, and I'm suggesting maybe we use that for capital to help us with what happened in 2021, which was.
So, whatever, since you got, it looks like you guys get and figure out what they get, we've got to make a decision to do something.
Just if it's, if it could be short, I apologize, but, but what is your impression? We're talking about two different concepts here. We're talking about what the park board has a perception and the town has a perception. What is the difference between the two? Are we in sync, or do you, do they think the park board should have paid for more than what it is? And is there any way for just a synopsis of how the dividing line goes? What does the park board think they have to pay for, and what should the town pay for, or the streets, or anybody else?
Good question. So historically, and I'm fairly new to this compared to Kendra and Joy was their liaison when she was on town council, but the way it was historically, from my understanding, is that the park board picked up anything that was basically street level, beautification, board blocks up near the streets. When we got into major structural type issues, like stairs going down, metal that we didn't really have before, then that would be streets. But we had, we had budget, we had time, we had the ability to help time out with, this all started really with stop 26, stop 30, they got washed away, and we built the metal structure going down. We had, we could afford that in our budget, we handled it, ran the project, we did the same thing with 30, got the stops back up and running. We got 24 done with the rock stairs going down to the beach. So we've just been sort of contributing more than we typically have been because we had some budget, we had some ability to do that, but we're not set up to do what happened under 21. So it's not a great answer for you, Joe, it's just, we just sort of started doing that, and then, once we took it up, now that we've got five, six stops that all needed to be done within the three-year period, it's, our budget can't handle it.
The other question, at 29, again, I don't know all the details, but were the residents going to contribute for parts of 29, or is that not, no longer in there?
So I got to answer that, Joe. So in terms of 29, that negotiation took, you know, quite a while, as you know, there's legal issues and we have a member, I don't remember any, understanding with them about how we're going to split up some across that area. For instance, the ramp that went down to access the beach, we gave them access to the beach on that western portion there of adjacent to the Osborn property that's actually a town lot. So we, you know, as we traded negotiating points with the homeowners that actually wanted to build their own seawalls there, they needed access from us. At one point, we thought about doing that right at stop, we didn't choose that option, we let them use the western lot as a trade-off, and they're paying for the protection across the western lot where the ramp was. In the negotiations too, as you know, you know, it was kind of, because it was in negotiations, we kind of kept it a little quiet for a while, but you know, it's been public balance for quite a while now. We negotiated for them to hold the old lawsuits off of every individual and the town, towns, boards and committees in kind of a trade-off sort of thing for basically us allowing the access to allow them to build their seawalls. So there was a bit of a trade-off down there. In terms of dollars and cents, we, the town will get the benefit of having that ramp, we're going to leave that in, we've talked about that a little bit, we're going to, it's going to be landscaped and brought back in as a smaller ramp, but we've decided to leave that in for public safety access. We've talked about it with Mark and Bob, we actually went down there the other day just to kind of rehash how we'll do that. So we'll leave the ramp in, the protection of that area with big boulders and all, it's part of the costs that are borne by the adjacent homeowners. But in terms of the actual stop 29, there were some things there that we felt like we were obligated to do some of, meaning the town would pick up the cost. There were some tieback rods that were put in by Woodruff, and there really wasn't any rock work per se, but then the stair work that we're talking about, Zach, there were some boulders put across 29, but then the stair work in addition to the rod work is, I kind of feel like is part of our responsibility. So there was a bit of a trade-off. What I had always hoped was, and it's kind of coming to fruition with the exception of the cost of stairs, we had a million dollar bond, we knew we had quotes in for stop 21 and stop 23, that we thought would add up to somewhere between $8,000 and $9,000, which would leave us above six figures to work for, to use for the negotiated items in 29. So that final building and final tallying hasn't occurred yet, but we did get a little surprised about how much we wound up having to spend at stop 21 and stop 23 just for access. Now, we knew what the numbers were for the seawalls, but we never knew, and the reason this is a little bit incestuous, it's too strong a word, but you know, Zach and the park board were the ones to basically design and look at what, you know, what do you want to do here? You've done that all along, you know, the things that you talked about earlier, you know, they kind of spearheaded the design. We got caught with our pants down because we had these new seawalls and we wanted to provide access. So as the projects were finishing up and we had a contractor there on site, we couldn't get the less expensive contractors in some cases to do some of the stair work, so we authorized Woodruff to go ahead and do the nice platforms that we built, some of them were wider, you know, I think we did a nice job of scoping out the projects. So we, again, it was more or less on a timing, material sort of thing. Zach got some early numbers from Woodruff, you know, we made some decisions as the projects progressed, and that's why we came up with the kind of numbers that we're seeing now, meaning $34,005 at stop 23 and $47 at stop 21. So what the problem we have right now is a couple of things, whether we, this decision, and you're making a good point, the decision is to how the town interacts with the park board is something that we want to entertain now, we want to talk about that. What's the future of the park? Are they going to continue to have to worry about structural issues or, and again, like Zach said, we're almost at a point now where we won't have big structure, I mean, unless the lake comes back with flooding starts knocking us around again. Right now, the lake is down, you know, the, all the work we put in is more than sufficient, and we don't anticipate needing big structural projects at stops anymore, with the exception of 28, 29 right now, and anything in the future. So it's kind of a self-healing sort of thing at this point, but what the problem from a dollars and cents standpoint is, we paid that 347 for stop 23, which included the 34.5 of stair work, which means we've now spent, out of that million dollar budget, we've spent $350 at 23 and $650 at 21, give or take. So now we've basically evened up $100,000. Now you take that $47,000 out of that $100,000, so now we're down to not quite enough to do what we negotiated for the 29. So that's why, you know, the discussion today as to how much the park can actually help with the 34.5 and the 47 will, will give us some relief on what's left over for the gold button to pay for the negotiated $100,000 or so at stop 29.
I would think that the agreement for me, for how we would word this, if we did have some sort of resolution, would be the park board will be responsible for upkeep and maintenance of existing stops. If, if we have another situation where the stop is washed away completely, or that needs to be put in, you've got to start, our, our budget for 21 would have been completely fine had we not had to redo the entire thing, start to finish. So we, that might be a way to word that, so that we can handle it in the future.
If that's, if that's the case, Zach, do you think that the property tax levy of currently $157,000 for 2022, would that be reduced if you guys have a reduction in your jurisdiction? If you're just upkeep, let's say moving forward, that seems like a lot of tax money would be put over there for upkeep.
Well, the park board has just stopped, we've got eight projects to go through.
Okay, tennis courts, parking lot ways, will, will the old school ever fall under you guys? That's sort of a, I sort of lose stuff.
They never really took care of the stops, except for what Zach said at the top, and so them taking care of the bottom part below the top of the stops has been a mission for you, and I appreciate the help, the financial help you guys have given to the town out of your budget. And so I guess that's, to me, that's the issue with my family business. I'm happy that they did what they did, and they kind of extended, it's all right. Now, your, your discrepancy was about $2,000, is that right, you said, in terms of the, with the accounting?
I think it's more than that, and I would like to come back with a report to do Zach figures.
Okay, what kind of, what?
It was, it was, okay, I mean, it'd be nice, we've got this full set of stop 29 and been waiting for a lot of years, and it should be nice if we could give them a go ahead to do something.
Actually, we've got a beautiful stop out there now, it was ugly, it was horrible, and now it's looking really great. No, you guys have done a great job, yeah, it's beautiful. I just, I have to, I really just got a full earful about where we're at, I'm interested with the parks from Center and through looking at our budget, and frankly, some of our approved budget numbers aren't even pulled over to our general ledger, so we just have to, if you just give us a week to come back and, you know, we'll happily, maybe Joy will say, here's what we got, and maybe we got more than we think. The gold one is down to $20,000, so some of us thought maybe that was six figures, but it's not. So there's some money that definitely is out there, and I think we'll be okay, but it would be nice to just have a week to put together the report, come back to you guys, say, here's where we're at exactly, and let's move forward. And then it would be helpful to identify what the park board's responsibility is versus the town, and get that approved through the state board accounts so that we have, you know, full clarity of this to who does what, you know, moving forward. That's all, otherwise I think we're, we're good.
Can I say, maybe, we're working on, we're working on uploading budgets now, and hopefully we'll be done Wednesday, and I think, being a meticulous person as I am, I would love to have Joy come in and sit with me, and we'll go through the numbers, and we'll look at where we are, what we spent, and then it would be helpful for me to understand what other projects we have, where they're going to be, when do we need to get these done. It's kind of giving you a financial projection, so we can not only come back and talk about, this is where we are today, this is where we're going, and even if we look out past this year, preparing for that next budget and everything, it, it just gives me more of an insight as to how to help you manage everything and come back and say, this is what the residents want, how we're going to make this happen.
Which we recently did for streets, you know, those guys, we need to know how much they got, where they're at with shirt letting, really it's surprising. We're ready to do that right now.
Okay, we'll talk about that afterward.
And as far, so what I'm going to go ahead, sorry, Joe, what, since we have quotes, we have prints, and we have the building permit applications are in their file for 19, we're going to go ahead and file the building permit for 28, 29, just to get that process over before we have approval on how we're going to find it, just to get the permits ready.
Yeah, just two specific questions, we're sure, at 29, is anybody going to remove that piling that's out of the lake?
The big white one?
Yeah, the one that was there to support the stairs, that's what that was, believe it or not, that's what it used to be, but that big plating that's sticking out in the ground.
The tall one we're going to use for the platform.
You're going to go that far out into the lake? You got to get to that tall one to get down to the beach.
That was put in, Joe, the single pile was put in specifically for this.
They're going to see.
You're talking about the three-sheep pile, the four-sheep pile, the Z-sheets that are down on the lakeside of the old core wall. We talked about whether or not to take that out. The problem we have is if we pull, you know, it's, it's inexpensive to whack it off, burn it off, and get it out, as long as water is still down, or it was, you guys have equipment, which I don't know if they're talking about equipment or not, I doubt it, but, so the point is, do we, as a town, live with a little bit of aesthetic issue, or in the interest of if the lake does something funky for three, four years from now, we have the ability to use that, as opposed to, once you cut it off, it's gone, good. I think we can, there's a channel, a sea channel on top, we can whack off the west piece of that, make it a little safer, maybe even grind it a little bit along that sea channel corner so nobody's hanging up on it, paint a mirror on it, I don't care, I mean, maybe there's some way to modify it, but personally, I mean, it's up to the council as a whole, but personally, I think it's probably a foolish thing to take it out.
Okay.
Just because the lake is so crazy, you know, we may need it again.
And no problem, I was just kind of curious, did I know your questions, you know, that, and the second question I got is going with 21, when, when you guys are working ahead of time, how much of the work are you doing for, for the people that own next door to the east? And are they doing any work, or are they part of this at all to?
They're not a part of what we're talking, we got a side from the bottom, the wall that went across their property, that's, that's something that town council did, nothing to do with us, but, so they're taking care of all the landscaping, there's a split rail fence that they installed that separates our property from their property, so we're okay with the stop 21 club, I believe, so.
And then they also, also they, it's all their property, but are they working on the, if you're not involved? Now, when you go down the stairs, is that one side section that's there is also, we're not doing anything?
I touch that at all, no, we're going, we have dune gas, look to be planted on the west side, going down the stairs, comes full, we're going to keep the base, that's just flat sand, keep that sand. We put the railing up on the east side, we've got a stop 21 club, didn't want folks walking over there on their side, so we put the, the garden out there. A little bit of history relative to the stop 21 club, you know, we negotiated with them, we were between a rock and a hard place, we could have spent roughly the same dollars to return our wall at the property line toward Lake Shore Drive from the lake, and that would have left that lot exposed, and we would have had to deal with Lake Shore Drive falling in. So we made the hatches decision to negotiate with them, bring the seawall all the way across to the adjacent property to the east so that we protected all of it. It's, it's one of these things that was distasteful because it was a lot of money for us to spend, but it was the most intelligent way to go about it. You know, somebody can question the logic now, but that's essentially how we wound up where we wound up. The other issue relative to that is, we have an easement, a permanent easement as part of the negotiation with the stop 21 club for, I think it's 10 feet either side of the wall, both at the foot and at the hip at the top. So that's a permanent easement that the town, you know, negotiated with them. An easement is an easement, we don't own it per se, it's, it's in perpetuity, it's an easement on, for maintenance for the wall, just so you understand how that should go.
We just paid the landscaping.
Yeah, it's distasteful, but part of the negotiation was.
Can I say something? I just, Zach and Joy and Kendra have done just a phenomenal job, I knew, in the last few years for the park board, but I think Joy sitting down with Helen is a great idea and talking about things, but Mr. Perry, I appreciate that you're sitting down and we've got issues with the state board and who's doing what, but you might want to take a few months and review the park board minutes that DM has to give you some idea of what projects the park board has done and plans to do. I don't think it's out of the line, and I think that they can work out something with what the park board will continue to do, what the streets will do. It doesn't seem to be an issue of what has to get done in terms of finances.
Thank you, Ameda, I always welcome your comments, and for the record, Joe will sit down with Helen and myself. Thank you. So if we have that meeting with the three of you, then we can come back to the next town council meeting maybe to figure out how we're going to pay for stop 29.
Well, it's, which one do you want to prioritize is the question, because I, I mean, we could do, we could just say 19, we could do, fund that ourselves, obviously, we could fund 28 or 29 ourselves.
I went down 28, what's, what's the urgency there?
It's just, the urgency was basically because we prioritized that two years ago as the next stop we're going to do.
Yeah.
And because of what all happened, it didn't end up being that, so we could easily make the argument 29, providing access is more important than repairing the stop.
Thank you.
What's the scope of 28, what's the, it's just going to redo the entire walkway all the way downstairs, every little way, wide, simple, wide.
But you can get down.
You can get down there, and the wood is not, I don't think it's in a dangerous condition, but it's beautiful, it's functional.
Sure, but 29 is, there's just nothing. Now, at 29, when we were down there, we were looking at.
Now, at 29, when we were down there, we were looking at, we were just kind of looking at it, trying to figure out how to do that best, and I guess I'm not sure you were talking about going straight down to the, to the water, or are you going to make a left hand?
We're going to make a left hand turn.
Now.
We're only going to go straight towards water, as far as we got to go to be able to take a left and a right.
Get that at the pylon. Great, okay, that is.
It'll be a bit of a platform sort of thing at the top. It's only going to be a turn, but the length of it is like 10 foot long of a metal or walk. So it won't have a platform per se, it's just going to be narrow, 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 narrow. No dealing platform, so like, you know, no extra room for adventure on the platform. We're trying to do as cost effective as possible, and we don't want to get into there. We're building a structure past 106 foot from Lake Shore Drive, that will end as well. Well, I think, you know, just for future reference, you guys have done a fantastic job with conceptualizing and coming up with good plans for the stops. We were fortunate, whether you look at this as a mistake or a problem, what we did at 21 and 23, or you look at it as, hey, we wanted much more than we typically would have, what we had was an eight foot stairway going down. So I guess I would make the argument, it's something like 29. Number one, you need to do it for access. For number two, if there is a way that we can spend a nominal amount of money and give you more of what you wanted, maybe a platform or something, this is the time to entertain. So I don't want a month of our lives, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we're kind of reaching the end of the time when we replaced everything, you know, we saved it out or in good shape, I think for future, then, particularly if the town decides that we're going to not have you guys put the bills or everything that goes on, then maybe we can anticipate doing more, like you and I have had some conversations about 24, whether we do something more significant at 24. That's not necessarily the park board's sole decision, but I think as we plan moving forward, then I don't think maybe always doing the cheapest thing is necessarily what we want to do. That's all. No, aside from 29, that's not at all what we've done. Yeah, you know, I know that. Every time we've done one, we've upgraded some. Yeah, I mean, we're in a bit of a pinch right now because of the service expenses, but I don't think that's, that's my personal opinion, it's up to the rest of the council. I don't, I don't know that we always want to do the cheapest thing, sometimes, you know, it might be nice to have the kind of platforms that we see at these new stations, well, we did this nice work, at the other stops, did we get it for it? Yeah, the only thing I can conceptualize there would be a bigger platform interface. It's going to be a metal platform though, so it's not as nice as sitting on a nice wooden boardwalk, but it's going to be a little, which is, which should last longer than that steel structure is going to put in.
I can't help but look at 19 every day. 19 is, it's like a five foot drop from the concrete wall to the sand. And I know, I know we have to do metal stairs, and make it beautiful and all that, but 10,000 bucks for, and I know that includes a fence, but it seems like a lot of money came in, not throw rocks or some sand down there. 18, for example, when they get off the boardwalk, it's all rocks, and people kind of gastro against the beach, and you know, that's that. But 19, is there another cheaper way to do it other than metal stairs?
Nothing is going to last. You can put rocks there, it's going to be unsafe. Now, we had rocks at 24, and that was unsafe, we moved the rocks around when we did the project, so that we ended up being stairs. But the water is going to come up there again, and it's going to move the sand around. So we can't really move the sand anywhere on the public trust. So we're kind of, the only way we can do that, hopefully, what we're going to put in, $7,000 for a metal aluminum structure attached to some pylons going in the sand, that's cheap, to be honest. That's a, it's a local contractor, he lives among me, she's interested in helping to, you know, get the stops back up and moving again. Hopefully, sand will just bury that, like, even the way those metal ones work, you won't even see it aside from the handrail. But that's, that's really the only option we could come up with, it's, yeah, and for that amount of money, it's the cheapest metal structure we've done so far.
I know, I always look at it like, just a job. I got you. No. And then, I have a question, and it's not appropriate, but I'll ask it. Is there ever a way to, like, for example, 23, so those people in the pink house are about to spend, you know, god knows what, 10 stairs to get down from their break wall to the beach? And yet, the bus stop goes right against their patio and the fence that prohibits them, and maybe it's their fence and our fence, that prohibits them from accessing the bus stop. You know, I mean, I don't know.
Some fence is a bench, but, I'll be, it's a baffle, sorry.
But was there ever a conversation of going, all right, well, maybe we make a deal with them, and we build access for them to get out at some cost to them, therefore, they don't have to spend money on their own stairs, and it mitigates some of the expenses that we have to and things that we do.
We're, we don't, we don't generally try to work with homeowners that will not utilize the stops or things like that, because they're setting up precedent for all the stops. We've got people ordering every stop we have. To be honest, they've got, they have trees planted on our property, they have it removed, we've got structure built on our property that shouldn't be there, their deck is on our property as it is, and we're not telling them they got to remove that, because it's structural. So I think we've been quite reasonable with that, with that rock.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that we're unreasonable, I'm just saying, maybe we can get money out of it, that's all.
So, yeah, I mean, we don't need it. Giving them access to the stop only helps them, and they would be walking through where the people are going to have strollers and sitting in, you know, near the beach. Yes, sir.
All right, I think, I think what we all should understand, what you just said, is that a lot of that property, where that concrete deck is, is town property, not their, their septic, is in town property. There's been agreements, I don't know what those agreements are, so you got to go through those first. And then the second thing, and it'll be interesting to see where it goes, they have submitted a building permit application to put up a fence on top of that deck. And that's interesting, because that's obviously town property also, every moment.
So I wasn't aware of that.
I don't know where any of this is going, but you got to remember, there was litigation about the septic. And I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't privy to what actually the agreements were, but there is quite a lot, where that concrete deck that is on town property, it's your home.
Yeah, if there's some synergies, we're talking, we'll adjacent the stops in some way, to make sure that's by the side of the top of this space, that this is the first thing.
Yeah, and again, I wasn't recommending that we give them any hand, favoritism, I was only saying possibly that would be a way in the future to, you know, mitigate our expenses.
We've talked about doing that before, like at 28, for example, the Denver House needed to get equipment down to the beach to work on this wall, and we were open at that time to, okay, we're going to redo the stop anyway, but if we got to take the wood and stop out, and then they rebuilt it to save them money, that's something, that makes sense. But allowing people access to the stop specifically, for me and for the rest of us on the committee, that's not something we really want to entertain, just to be consistent with how we manage.
Well, I think you also see the sort of problem, too, that you know, Joy wants to talk at stop 19, where they simply told us their way down for pools, so there was no discussion in there.
But just for clarity, I guess I can say that we did budget for stop 19, stop 28, stop 29 this year, and we put cover goals, it's the 47 and the 35, if you take your, what did you let go of?
Okay, got it.
Or get money from, from the 40,000?
Well, that's, yeah, that's exactly where we said, as Tim says, he's only got 22 left in the go button, well, if we take the 47 and the 35, or 34, 5, that's my other, that gets me back to my six figures to pay for 29, we need it. So, yeah, I think we're, now that we've identified the problem, it's just a question of the council on this issue. And I think today, where we're discussing, you know, not in this situation, in the future, how we play to get it, so. So if we're going to draft something up to talk about who pays for what later, where does that come from? Do I draft that up? Does that, budget by streets? I mean, where does that come from? Where somebody actually started learning some more about that?
Yeah. That's a good question, I'm aware of this, I suppose.
So it's generally about the council?
They have asked the council.
Sure. Yeah, what are we talking about around here?
I'm talking about the basic, you know, the one.
In the future? In this case?
No.
People in the future. Well, I mean, I don't know, you know, from a personal standpoint, I think the park department has its own industry with the taxes, it also has a budget area. You guys, you know, manage your budget, once it's presented and approved, and then you bring your bills, I mean, I don't think we have a separate checking account for the park department, right? I mean, you're still operating out of the office.
Yeah.
So ultimately, the clerk has the responsibility for making sure that books are correct, and then authorize the payments essentially. If you're within your budget, you're doing what you said you're going to do, you're not doing something crazy, I don't know that the council has to prove every expenditure, but if, I don't know, we have to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, ordinance, say that or not?
Well, I think it's already in place.
Yeah, I think that every year is a different deal, and I mean, you know, it's storm next year, whatever the block is at work.
But I would agree, if you guys are within your budget, you don't need any town council approval to share the money within your budget. But if we were to identify what is within your jurisdiction moving forward, I think that would be something that would have to be a resolution. And if you wouldn't mind maybe drafting what your idea is, and then perhaps the rest of us can review that and add, or, you know, and then they can go to the council for a resolution. I mean, if you guys say, hey, we own from the stairs down, and you guys have the street to the stairs, or whatever, or vice versa, or whatever, if you want to start that exact, that would be handy.
Okay, there's probably something in the record right now in terms of ordinance, is whatever we set up. I'm not sure there is. At some point, there's.
This kind of is a mutual, I mean, we just kind of talk constantly, you know, with Tom, and we always kind of talk to Tom, and we plan the whole day, and the street would pay for, and we pay for, and this kind of thing.
The park, did that, did the bus stops at one point move from the jurisdiction of the streets and parks?
Yes, just, just at the top for people to age.
And again, that was necessarily written.
But not necessarily, that's the sole top.
And obviously, we brought something up, that would include the park department, the county council, and say, hey, we had a terrible storm, we should be held, and that's the first, you know, so I can draw something up, well, you know, if you get something out of paper, it's not going to be the end all be all in terms of how we end up.
We've got a meeting tomorrow night, park board meeting, so we'll just talk, we'll talk through it and see what the other, the other three think. There's no ownership, by the way, I mean, essentially, the only thing is, you guys have the things that you do, there's no, I mean, it's, as far as I know, you don't own any of it.
That is correct, so Long Beach Park Board doesn't own any property.
Right, so it's still not, as far as the ownership, ownership.
Yeah, and our park department, I think, no, they haven't very, 40 million to help in the town. I don't think that they have any desire to develop a $600,000 surplus like our water department has. So I don't think they have to worry about that, that that's, that's my opinion.
As a park member, I agree with that, I think that seeing what has been done over the years, and again, being knowledgeable about what's been done over the years, and how they've operated, and how they've stayed within budget, and I do have to say that the last two and a half years, I've seen Zach and Joy and Kendra's work, and what they've done, and how Zach has used different contexts, and spent hours and hours down there. And it seems to me that now trying to put something in writing seems to be more limiting than leaving it open to discussion. There's never been an issue with finances with the park board, with overspending, underspending, money disappearing, money not showing up. So why are we now looking to put the park board into pigeonholes about, you know, bullet points about what we do and what we don't do? Like, we meet every month, everything, our minutes are up to date, our minutes are filed every month, I do them, they've always been done. So I think that very, you know, historically, you will see that if you look at our minutes, they're detailed, what we do, when we meet, and I just don't see the sense of, you know, why do we have to, and I don't want to say inter here, but now why do we have to put something more in writing? This is Long Beach, it's not Chicago, it's, it's Long Beach. When things work, and things work, maybe we should just let things continue to work the way they do.
Yeah, and it was a one-off situation. For sure, a 15-year half situation. So we'll talk tomorrow, we'll, next town council meeting, we'll, our heads together decide what we recommend, which could be, do we just keep operating like we work? You know, the other thing in terms of the finances, I think Tim has some concerns of, and I understand his a little bit more, you know, since I've grabbed up some of those budget plans, but I think, in the overall, I think we're going to have a better understanding where we stand. We've done some things with the water side, well, we've done some things with negotiating fire contract, we've done some things, now we've got an administrator, the police department that is a little more transparent about how we spend money, and how it was about getting funds and that sort of thing. We had some great opportunities recently with this LLT, this LLT, this LLT was a decent funding, assuming those were the council at county level, so we're really sitting pretty well. But in terms of, you know, the right hand moment, the left hand's doing, and some of this interchange as far as dollars and cents, you know, it's important that your reports reflect enough information that we can make intelligent decisions. And that's what I think this next, I think we're done with, kind of talking about what we've already talked about, but in my mind, this, the other thing we, we don't necessarily need you guys for, but how we're going to pick up the tab for this, you know, setting the eighty dream, we are depending on the side of that sort of, because we will, you know, the day of reckoning on 29 is coming soon. Because we're, we'll invoice for that to the homeowners, and then consequently, you know, we'll get our tabs, or whatever we can negotiate down, we have to figure out how we're going to pick that up. And again, I always thought it was going to be a go on, right? So what was that fair, what is going on?
There'll be some problems.
Yeah, speaking of invoices, that'll be a tricky one, when the homeowner gets it and it comes to us, but we'll figure that out. Also, when we get billed for anything, please make sure the contractor bills the town, and not, you know, when we've got, yeah, just make sure the bill gets sent to the town, it's cleaner, we can manage it a little bit better.
And some of what you're hearing too, is these guys are cleaning up the functions and the interactions and the way that the county works such that things like, you know, there's going to be a single pile of money instead of a bunch of piles of money for them. So they're doing some, these things that have nothing to do with the park board necessarily, but as they march through this, they're trying to get a better understanding of how all these things interplay, how we can do better with our cash management, we've not got a good reader, I don't understand it real well, but so they're doing some good things in terms of, they're tightening up the way we keep track of cash around here, how we do all this, so that our budgets are reflective of actual reality, rather than throwing 3% on last year's numbers, and then making a whole bunch of shell game changes because you didn't have it right the first place. I think that's where it's going with us. It's not necessarily saying we don't want you guys to have the money, it's how do we keep track of how is that interrelated with it. Sure, understood, no problem.
Yeah, I think we just need to make sure that we don't talk about this too long, because I think 19 and 29 are priorities, and it's already almost nine.
Well, from a budgetary standpoint, I can tell you, not that we're a sixty, you've got about 350, you need to figure it out, so I think you can afford 30 grand. I mean, I, you know, we can't prove that today, but if you're asking me, you've got the money, it's just, I think we need to talk about it at the next council meeting. By then, you'll have your building, so I think we can do it agreement.
What's that in Long Beach, Jack? A lot of brown as well as America?
Sorry, we did our best out of mine, and that's it.
Just better organization, less prices, and maybe even fewer meetings.
That'd be sweet, though. One last little quick thing, if anybody was at, I forget what meeting it was, but at any rate, the stat 19 people that disturbed the staff that Anita mentioned.
Oh, yes.
Made an offer to help with stat 19 application, but they offered to do more than just care of the beach. So it could be that we can get, and that's not done yet, but maybe we could, as we negotiate with those, they're asking for access again at the fall, and that's, I know that's a tough one, I know that, but, you know, again, with all due respect, that's, so, should we give them that decision we made to make? We made, I know, and I know it's a sore subject, but I also think if we can get them to, you know, maybe there's a way, you know, to everybody comes out of, I'm not suggesting we give them access by any stretch, but in terms of what they feel like they're in the doghouse, I think at this point, maybe we can do a case add to our hands. I don't know, it may not turn out to be, I just want to mention.
They're also, they're also taking more equipment down here to make the care of something.
No question. No question, the issue needs more airtime on the council, there's no question.
Why can't you just say, you can do this without having to care?
So what we're going to commit to you, that we're going to make that decision, so our next council meeting is, oh, three weeks?
May.
May 9 is the next council?
Yeah, may 9, so we're talking to the exact terms. So, you guys are going on that call in that meeting? Well, what's, what, whether or not to give them access in summer provided they're getting, or no?
Sometimes.
I'm talking about the lines. Got it. Now, listen, here's another way of looking at this. Unless we anticipate having to force you to give us 34, 5 plus 47, 5, which I don't anticipate doing, your stop 29, I'm sorry, your stop 19 and your stop 28, I'm sorry, your Stat 19 and your Stat 28, I'm sorry, your Stat 19 and your Stat 29 are in your, well, well within your means, is what I understand, is that correct? So the way we stand today, unless we have anticipated making that pay for some of these in terms of that set, you're, you could do these on your own, correct?
Correct.
Am I reading that right?
Yes, sir. We could do 19 and 28 and 29.
All three?
If we didn't have, if we didn't have the front 21, can you bring?
Any parts of you?
And Joy can go over that with, with that one.
Because you're talking, you're talking 10, 32, uh, yeah, 48, so 50 grand roughly in your three projects that you want to do.
Maybe it's like 65, I'm supposed to 65 from a straight line.
Okay, so 60, and so you could do that, and that hurt yourselves moving forward.
Yes.
So I guess, the real decision then, the elephant in the room is, what do we do with the 70,000?
Yes.
Yes.
You can't tell you, I did bring that, we got that 47,000 off, it was on December 21st, and I brought it, and I told him, me, the park board is not handling this, and Phil told me, don't worry about it, all that being paid on, uh.
Well, that's iron lies to one of those faults, and.
Yeah, he's telling you that's why we moved ahead.
But it's only wrong because we paid the 47 and 35, 34 and 45, that's what, that's why, it's, it's not wrong on the rest of the point, but that's why mine is based on having six figures, but the only reason, it's not based, yes, so, this is really not, I don't know if it's germane to this meeting even, but when we go on to the budget, guys, 1, 2, 3, what's on the board?
And.
So Janet Stone, I see Janet a little bit earlier. Janet, are you formally at the budget meeting, budget finance?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Without the mic, then, I mean, okay, so the next budget finance meeting is before the next council meeting, so we can give this up, make a recommendation.
Yeah.
We're gonna go, the permits are looking ready to move quickly, soon as we get the OAK.
So the act of infusion of about $50,000, that right, because we had, we had $12,000 left to go on.
It depends on, it depends on what we'll be on the paper out of 21 and 23, it depends on what we have to be brought on that.
We have 40,000 over from last year, but it comes from.
We're gonna be in good shape, this is not, we're not talking about big dollars, we're gonna be in good shape, but keep in mind now, if we, if we intend to take the 34.5 and the 47.5 out of the goal bond, that means the 22 is all we've got left, and then we still have this obligation for around six figures at 29, that doesn't go away. So if we keep the way it's sitting, which means that 27, or the 34, 47, or 84 already got the goal bond, we leave that like it is, which is okay, the town's gonna have to come up with that 70 or 80 to put with the 20 that's left, to pick up a six-figure XAMR, just to be honest with you, and that's something we need to talk about. Do we want us to be in the next budget finance?
I'll be there.
Okay. Any questions in front of the booth for anybody out there?
Yeah.
If, if you're, you're, there you go.
No, I, I don't, I don't have anything, I don't have anything to add, thanks for everybody's hard work.
Okay. Anybody else, Janet?
No, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say that, I'll favor, do you have, you guys do one, oh, do we have, do I have that? Right? Janet, you're in favor?
Yes, sir.
You're in favor of Janet Wong?
I'm in favor.
That's it, the town council, that's right? I think you're in favor.